Dr. Genovacy.
Mr. Capadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Dr. Lou? Mr. Peters? Dr. Resnick?
Here.
Mr. Slotman? Ms. Williams Galliano? Dr. Wilson?
Here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 4th, 2024. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Bio. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hbrsc.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in any public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. Okay, I need a first and a second to approve the minutes for the February 20th work session meeting as well as regular meeting. All in favor? Any opposed or standing? Minutes are passed. Okay, we would love to hear our report from our student representative, Hannah. I should say, Ms. Hannah Chu.
Hello? Is it on? Okay. Now that we're over halfway through the month of March, we are almost finished with the third marking period. Hopewell students recently attended the state competitions for DECA and FBLA, and based on their achievements at the competitions, we have four students who will be competing at the National DECA Conference and eight students competing at the National FBLA Conference. Earlier this month, several seniors went back to Stony Brook Elementary and Bear Tavern Elementary to participate in Read Across America events, and they're also looking forward to helping with the elementary school field days later this year. This Friday, the freshman class will be hosting their freshman semi-formal. Our physics classes began the Conquer of the Hill competition today, where all students who are taking physics build a model vehicle and compete in a bracket-style competition. This competition has been in existence at Hopewell for decades, and it's something that everyone looks forward to each spring. Spring sports began last week, and over 300 students are participating in baseball, softball, golf, tennis, volleyball, lacrosse, track, and unified track. And finally, with the end of the marking period being next week, the Student Council has been planning the Spirit Week and the Spring Pep Rally. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Chu. Any questions from the Board? Okay.
Thank you, and I just learned that Mr. Tru...
Oh! Wow! Congratulations indeed. So, to keep you in, Cornell, you are more than welcome to leave us and always welcome to stay. Thank you again. Okay, I will forego my report today and pass to Dr. Treese.
I hope everyone had a happy St. Patrick's Day. I know I enjoyed the Bulldog Dash at the high school with our class. We had a great turnout this weekend, so I got to do a run before I ate my traditional Irish meal. I kind of southernized it a little bit, but it worked out. This evening, we have some distinguished guests. I do have some comments, but we do have a lengthy agenda, including our SSDS report that Mr. DiStefano is here to give us, which stands for our Student Safety Data Systems Report that we're required to report to the community to let you know how we're doing with student safety. Ms. Smith, who's not here with us tonight, she's phoning in to help with that report. And then I'll also have a few more words to say before we do the budget conversation that we have planned for this evening. But without further ado, I want to shout out some of our distinguished guests. We have a number of students here. We probably miscalculated and should have used a community room. Next time, we'll do better. But we have some of our visual performing arts that I'll defer to Principal Riley to introduce to you. And I also have two very distinguished Boy Scouts here that are here to receive their communications badge. Harrison, can I get a wave? And also Charlie? I won't make you say a public statement. I know I threatened that earlier, but you don't have to say anything. But we're going to try to demonstrate for you how to engage at a board meeting civilly. All right? We're going to do that tonight, okay? As we talk about budget. Budget gets a little hairy, though. We'll do our best. All right. With that being said, Ms. Riley, if you can introduce our guest here tonight? Oh, that works. Mr. Umstead, Supervisor of Visual Performing Arts. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Dr. Treese, President Williams Galliano, members of the Board, administrator of colleagues who are here as well. I also wanted to take a moment also to thank staff members from my department who have come here tonight to join me in recognizing the students that I'm excited to introduce to you soon. And I want to thank members of our community, especially our parent community, who have come here also in support of the wonderful students that I get to highlight this evening. I want to take you for...I want to thank you for the time. I appreciate it. I know, as referenced by Dr. Treese, the amount of time that is involved with running such a wonderful school district. So, we appreciate your efforts and appreciate this time. But I do believe it's very much aligned with what you do and with what you care about, which is highlighting the strengths and successes of our students. And that's why I'm so appreciative when I spoke to Dr. Treese about the possibility of bringing some students forward and that you were open to doing that. So, thank you. So, the students that I want to share with you tonight and introduce are just a small segment of a really wonderful group of students that spend time in Central High School, Timberlane Middle School, and of course, we have our wonderful elementary school students who are also moving in a direction of defining themselves as artists and performing artists. But the students that I have that I'm excited to introduce to you today are students who not only have worked within the structures of our system here in Hopewell Valley, providing us with opportunities to enjoy their wonderful talents through what we offer as far as coursework and extracurricular work. So, in addition to the joy we receive as we encounter our students in the marching band, concerts, plays, musicals, et cetera, we have the opportunity, and I know that many of the students that I'm going to be introducing to you, have graced us with their talents in those areas. But the students that I'm highlighting tonight really have demonstrated an interest initiative and a sense of challenging themselves to go farther. So, in addition to their very successful backgrounds in the academics, successful academic excellence that they are achieving in classrooms across our schools, and in addition to the work that they're doing, again, with our programs and with extracurriculars, these students have actually gone farther, that they have challenged themselves by auditioning outside of our school district. And so, again, in a state of New Jersey, thankfully, we have a very robust support for the arts across the state and the nation. And some of these students, as I said, have looked for opportunities to develop themselves, go take that extra step, and have been successfully placed in a variety of those very challenging. Consider, again, the interest across the state of New Jersey, pure population density that is New Jersey. There's a lot, a lot of interest, and there are a lot of students that were auditioning for a very few spots. And so, it is my pleasure to be able to introduce to you the students that I'm highlighting along with their teachers for the efforts and the successes that they've had. So, I'm going to...we have certificates. I'm going to invite, if I may, Ms. Morse and Mr. Schwarzer, who have joined us, and any other teachers who are here. They're not going to speak because we don't...we know how busy you are, but I would like them to be here to be recognized for the supports that they provide. Thank you. And so, I have certificates. I'm hoping that... I'm going to call them up in the order in which the certificates are in the folder. And students, as you come up, I'm thinking that perhaps you could greet the members of this, of our department, your teachers. And then, if it's okay with you, we'll go right around the tables and just have them shake hands with each of you, and then we'll have you go back to your seats. Okay? So, we're going to start off in the area of vocal performance. And at Central High School, we have a student, Om Sharma. I'd like to recognize you for being placed in All-State Vocal Jazz Choir. Connor Bowden, All-State Vocal Jazz Choir and Region Two Honor Choir. Thank you, though. Switching into...the next area of focus is in the area of theater and dance. The students that I'm going to call to the front now are students who have participated by auditioning and sending audition materials in to the New Jersey Thespian Society, and these students have achieved the rating of Superior, which is close to impossible to get. However, we have quite a few who have here in Hopewell Valley. First, I'd like to introduce Jack Elliott, who is a Superior Thespian for the state of New Jersey. Also, Kayla Reber. I'm not sure who is here or isn't, but Kayla? Thank you. Wonderful. Also a Superior we have is Jacob Brown. I'm also pleased to recognize Rachel Thornton. We also have Rose Andreski. All right. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. So, this final group of students have excelled in the area of instrumental music. So, we have a variety again. There's band and orchestra students that are a part of this group, and I'm so pleased to share that toward the end, I'll be noting two specific individuals who are from Timberlane Middle School, who have gone forward in this process in the intermediate level and achieved success. But first, we're going to start with Central High School, and I'd like to call Ivan Plaznick up if of it here. And I want to recognize that Ivan was placed into the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Wind Ensemble, and then also at the state level, the New Jersey State Wind Ensemble. So, that was Ivan. Well done. How about Erin Lee? Erin Lee also placed into the Central Jersey MEA Wind Ensemble and the state level NJMEA Symphonic Band. I have Minkashi Rao. Minkashi also placed Central Jersey Music Educators Association Symphonic Band and at the state level, Symphonic Band as well. Okay, I'd like to invite up Elizabeth Kim. Elizabeth Kim also placed into the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Symphonic Band and the state Symphonic Band as well. Okay. I'm going to introduce a student who has excelled in the area of piano. We have a 2024 International Talent Hunt Competition for piano. We have a recognized winner, and that is Chelsea Roberts. Next, I'd like to invite up Irina Kowals, who was the New Jersey Region Orchestra, placed within that group for 2023-24, also a part of the All-State Orchestra in the area of string bass. I'm pleased to introduce Danielle Rizavi. Danielle is the winner of the Crescendo Music Competition for violin. Okay. And we wrap up with two middle school students that I'd like to introduce. We have a student placed into the Central Jersey Music Educators Association Region Two Intermediate Wind Ensemble for playing the Alto Saxophone. He's placed at second chair, which is amazing considering the level of those that audition. And that's Ivan Rupasinghi. Come on up, Ivan. And then, finally, our final honoree this evening, also from Timberlane Middle School. She is a student that was placed in Central Jersey Music Educators Association Intermediate Region Chamber Orchestra, and her name is Stella Evanini. So, to close, I just want to thank you for your time. And again, I know how busy you are. You've got much to consider, even this evening, as you're considering budget and all that's implied there. I do want to thank you again for the support that you provide to our, not only to our department, to our community and our world through the support of the performing arts. Our students are richer because of what you do and what you do. So, thank you all. I appreciate your time. Congratulations, students.
Okay. Just really quickly, we are going to try to do a picture out in the hallway, and I just want to take a quick opportunity to say thank you to our staff who nurture these amazingly gifted individuals, and thank you all for coming out. We appreciate getting to meet you, and also, anytime you want to perform at a...
Yes, please do.
Let us know. We thoroughly enjoy that as well.
Thank you. Thank you to the teachers also for coming out tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you for inspiring our students.
We'll take a quick few minutes for the audience, and we'll be right back.
They're coming. I'm sure they're chatting.
Okay, want to call everybody back? Thank you all for being efficient. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our next agenda item is public hearing on the special opportunity for public comment on the 2023-24 Period One Report of Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse, excuse me. So, we'll have a report, and then I'll open a public comment separately.
All right. Thank you very much. My name is Dan DiStefano. I am the Supervisor of School Counseling in the District. So, most of the people in the room, I think, have heard this presentation a couple of times, but I know we have a couple of new board members. So, I'm going to talk and review our SSDS system, which also involves our HIB investigation and reporting procedures. We will also present numbers and statistics from the first half of the school year, from September through December, so that's what the state denotes as Reporting Period One. And then, in the fall, we do the presentation again, and that's the full year for Reporting Period One and Two. The next slide contains a screenshot of the SSDS form that all the schools fill out after certain types of incidents. So, SSDS stands for Student Safety Data System, and the types of incidents noted on this form all require submission to the state. The second page includes an overview of our restraint and seclusion statistics. We don't practice the seclusion portion, but we have a safety cares program in place for the restraint portion. It's worth noting that safety cares training is a full two-day staff training, which any staff who's going to be certified to use safety cares is required to participate in. And then, there's one full day of training annually to kind of re-up that certification. You know, while restraint is in the title of what we're doing here, it's also worth focusing on the fact that safety cares is really about de-escalation and avoiding any sort of restraint. You know, if we're ever thinking about doing this, we're dealing with somebody who's having quite a moment and often in danger of hurting themselves or hurting somebody else. So, anybody who's trained in safety cares knows how to try to de-escalate that situation before it reaches the point of an adult putting hands on a child, because that's obviously the last thing we want to do. But if we do do it, we have a lot of really thoughtful procedures in place to ensure that we're doing it in a sensitive way and that we're, again, working to de-escalate and not escalate. This slide here shows the total number of suspensions and expulsions, although expulsions is thankfully zero, the total number of suspensions in the school district this year. It is worth noting that the number of suspensions and the number of incidents don't necessarily match up. So, when a student is disciplined or punished for something they've done, it could include two days out of school and three days in-school suspension, so that would count on this slide twice, while it would only be counting on the list of incidents once. So, the numbers don't necessarily match up one-to-one. I just wanted to point that out. And these numbers are down...the out-of-school suspensions is down slightly from this time last year, when it was 17. The in-school suspensions is up slightly from last year at this time. You see a lot of numbers on this slide. Along the top, you have all the different types of incidents that would be considered Student Safety Data System entries. So, anything from violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, any type of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and any restraints or any time that that safety cares restraint training needed to be utilized. The terms violence and vandalism can both be kind of confusing or not completely descriptive, so just wanted to expand on those terms. The term violence in the state's definition refers to assaults, fights, kidnapping, robbery, or extortion, sexual assault or conduct, and threats. It also includes threats of violence, not just acts of violence themselves. The term vandalism can refer to arson, computer trespassing, damage of property, false public alarm, theft, and trespass. So, not just what you would typically think of as vandalism of graffiti or damaging property. The substance abuse numbers also do not include our random drug screenings, which we do, so those numbers are not included. These are students who are found under possession or under the influence in school. And then, the two HIB columns, HIB Confirmed and HIB Alleged, those numbers add together to the total number of HIB investigations that we would have conducted. So, the alleged is not included in the confirmed. They're two separate columns. In terms of the specifics on some of those incidents, under vandalism, we had an instance of theft at Timberlane. We have an instance of trespassing at the high school. Violence, we had two fights at the high school, one at Timberlane, one simple threat at the high school. We did a behavioral team assessment there, and it was not a credible threat that was founded, zero weapons, which is good, and there were three instances of possession at the high school. Possession of substances, I should say. Okay, this slide gives a snapshot of a four...is that a five-year total? I'm sorry. Which, with each type of instance, as noted on the bottom, you can see that our substance... You can see that our substance abuse number is down this year, which is a good thing. No weapon instances, that's another good thing. So this just allows you to see how this progressed over the years. And you can see that weird twenty-to-twenty-one year, obviously, where the numbers were super skewed, because the children were not in school. The next few slides are pretty busy, lots of words. But I'm gonna review a lot of the programming and efforts that we have in place in our school buildings with the wellness of our students in mind. So everything from the Student Wellness Center that Ms. Riley created at the high school this year. We have a district drug and alcohol awareness team, awareness committee. We run a webinar series called Parent University, and that's with the help of our Rutgers UBHC clinician who we have on staff in the district. And she'll touch on a number of different topics throughout the school year based on what we're seeing, really, and where we see a need for programming. The next program coming up is focusing on young people and their use of devices, which I think is a really, really hot issue right now. Obviously, we've recognized a lot of weeks and months. In the first half of the year, we have Suicide Prevention Month, we have Red Ribbon Week, Week of Respect, School Violence Awareness Week, all within September and October. So we do our diligence in recognizing them during their denoted weeks and months, but we try to focus on them and recognize them all throughout the school year, so that they're ingrained in what we do. Timber leader outreaches throughout the year. Red Ribbon Week was the first example of that this school year. We have a program called Minding Your Mind that's been coming to the high school for years now to talk to our students about mental health struggles, anything from mental health itself to addiction, to substance use. Real powerful presentations where real people from the real world come in and tell their stories. They're not telling other people's stories. They're not just preaching about what to do. They're people who've really gone through it, and they have a real way of connecting with our students and making an impression. We collect exit tickets from every student following these presentations, which is what we really use to gauge the impact that it's having. And just from reviewing those exit tickets after Minding Your Mind this year, it was clear that it really was hitting home, and you know, many students commented that it was the best assembly they'd had, or the best presentation of that type that they've had. With that in mind, we've introduced also Kind Minds, which is the elementary version of Minding Your Minds. So it's obviously designed a little bit differently, but we've expanded that to the elementary schools just within the past couple of months here. We conducted vape take-back days at the high school and the middle school in partnership with the Prevention Coalition of Mercer County. They do a lot of great work throughout the county. They're part of the municipal alliance, I'm sorry. They're part of the Hopewell Valley Municipal Alliance. We always get regular updates from them at those meetings, and they've come in and do those vape take-back days with us. We did a mental health training for all the coaches in the district during a January Professional Development Day. We have Science of Suicide presentations to all ninth-grade students. Just last month, that was conducted in freshman wellness classes. And tomorrow is the first day of Teen Mental Health First Aid, which is gonna be delivered to all of our eleventh-grade students once again in their wellness classes. That's a program we introduced last year, and it's really, you know, really powerful. Matt Bellis comes in most springs and presents to the rising ninth graders when they come over to the high school for their eighth-to-ninth grade transition day. So we're in the process of planning for that day, which is either May, I have May there. It's either May or June, but he'll be in once again to present to our eighth-to-ninth grade, eighth-rising ninth graders. Alright, some things we have in place just ongoing every year. Our student-to-counselor ratios are very good in this district. They're below the American School Counselor Association recommendations of two-hundred-and-fifty-to-one. There's a lot of states that are well above that number, so I'm proud that we're under it. We have full-time student assistance counselors at the high school and the middle school, as well as a full-time district-wide student assistance counselor who travels to all of our buildings, including the elementary schools. That allows us to provide another layer, another tier of counseling support for our students. We have group counseling offered at all levels based on student need. Certain groups run almost every year, and then certain groups come up organically, and counselors identify a need and put together a group, you know, based on what they're seeing on the ground in the building. Alice, obviously, we have our Alice School Safety Trainings for all students and staff every year. District Safety Presentations for families, school safety and climate teams. They meet in every building every year, comprising of teachers, counselors, administrators. There's always a parent on the school safety climate team, and they work to discuss what's going on in the building, what's everyone seeing, and what type of programming might be necessary to help our students. Youth Mental Health First Aid Training is also offered to staff and families. So that's kind of like a relative of the Teen Mental Health First Aid Program that we deliver to our eleventh graders, but that's made available to adults. We have threat assessment teams in each building. They're trained through the state's procedures, and they meet throughout the school year to review what's going on in the building. Faculty training around HIB in all of our buildings, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And we have a minimum of at least one anti-bullying specialist in each building. In addition to that, we have a strong partnership with both the Hopewell Township Police Department and Pennington Borough Police Department. I was able to sit with them in the fall and get them, you know, up to date on all of our HIB laws and procedures that we have in the district, so that we can work cooperatively with them. I also wanted to mention, it's not on the slides, because it just came up the other day, but we were invited to attend trainings on a program called Say Something through the Sandy Hook Promise Organization. They've partnered with the New Jersey DOE to put together a prevention program that I'm really excited to hear more about. Actually, I have an online training with them later this week, and our student assistance counselors will also be attending that. So, you know, hopefully more to come on that, but it sounds promising and exciting. Oh, there is one more slide, sorry. We're continuing to unroll the Character Strong SEL curriculum throughout the school district. That was something that came from our SEL Committee, which also plans our SEL Days, the implementation of Character Strong, et cetera, ongoing throughout the school year. We have a restorative justice program in partnership with the Mercer County Prosecutor's Office. So that's something that was unrolled at Timberlane this year. Detective Webb comes in from the prosecutor's office and meets with a group of students on a regular basis to train them and to teach them how to run restorative circles, so that students can provide that peer leadership after incidents. This training focuses specifically on incidents of bias that might occur in the school building. So Detective Webb has been training our students and staff this school year with the intent of them turnkeying that training into the school building in future years, so that that program could remain in place. And we've had talks of him coming to the high school to work with the adults in the high school in the same capacity next school year. So really excited about that. It's not the only restorative work that we do. We focus on that, especially in terms of like reaction to instances of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or after discipline referrals. We like to not just punish problems away, or not just suspend, or give detention in isolation, but also try to do work to make those moments into teachable ones. So our vice principals, I was talking to one of our vice principals this morning, and he showed me how they actually went through the entire student code of conduct. And for every possible infraction, they have a document where it links it directly to potential restorative practices that they can put in place, educational components that they can have the students complete, things like that. You know, rather than a student just sitting idly in a detention or in a suspension, if they have one, then, you know, there's some good that can come out of that time, too, and that can actually be, you know, learning something, you know, beyond, obviously, their normal schoolwork that they might be doing. I already mentioned the safety cares training, so I won't go over that anymore. Municipal Alliance, I mentioned that, too. One of the subcommittees of the municipal alliance that we have in district here is the Digital Wellness Committee, which Heidi Kami runs, and Dr. Therese sits in the meetings with us as well. And we really focus on how to dig in and help students with what's going on with those devices, because I think that's really the biggest thing we have to worry about with our students, I think. You know, until we figure out how to really, how to help students use technology the right way, and how to help everybody use technology the right way, I think that's really like the foundation we need to build, so that more good can be done beyond that. But, you know, I honestly can't imagine what it's like as a teenager, you know, a middle school student, to have that phone. And to, you know, I remember in middle school, I used to go home and close the door, and I loved getting home and, you know, kind of just, you know, let's flush that day, let's come home and reset. And you think about the kid now, who's, they've got the phone in their hand, and it probably just gets worse when they get home, right? Everybody is on their phones, and everything's, you know, it's, I digress. But I think that's one of the areas that we really need to focus, and the Digital Wellness Committee focuses on that work. We continue to have our air therapy dogs on-site regularly in all of our buildings. Dr. Therese hosts her coffee and chat, focused on different areas, like substance abuse and school safety and mental health. And we do continue to see a reduction in the number of vape alarms that we've seen at the high school this year, following an increase in the discipline and the student code of conduct, so. Just a quick overview.
Thank you very much. Do anyone at the table have a question?
Hey, Dan, thank you for the tip. More important, I'll call you back. I just have two quick questions. There was two acronyms to that.
Sure. So Alice is our, it's our school safety program that we use. Like, it trains students, teachers, staff on what to do in all different types of situations. So whether it's a lockdown, whether it's a shelter in place, whether, you know, whatever, you know, whatever might need to be done in a situation, that's the training that everybody receives, so that they're able to navigate all that. Alice is an acronym, yeah?
It is. It's Alert Lockdown Inform Counter Evacuate. So those are the steps that students learn. So it's an option-spaced evacuation process. As opposed to what was back in the eighties, which was just lockdown and wait for somebody to get you. It's option space.
Behavioral health assessment team. So if a student has made, you know, for instance, a threat against the building or anything like that, or another student, that's a team that would convene to conduct and assess the student and the credibility of the threat that was made.
I could take that one, if you don't mind. So the restorative program that they're talking about, the Mercer County Prosecutor's Office approached not just Hopewell, but other school districts, Hamilton's also involved. I believe they have groups going at Ewing and in West Windsor Plainsboro. Students were able to volunteer to be part of these programs. We have, at the middle school right now, we have about ten students who have been trained in this work. They meet every Tuesday with Detective Webb, who trains, has trained them to run restorative circles. The prosecutor's office right now, every school has the obligation to report any bias incident. So every time we have one of these harassment, intimidation, bullying reports that come to us, and it revolves a racially charged issue or a biased crime, that could be a biased crime, we have to report to them. They decided that they wanted to support us in the work of educating students, not just punishing them. So while we're reporting those to them, we can say, we want to actually run a restorative circle around this particular incident. The students have to agree to participate, the victim and the person that is the alleged victim or the victim, if it's confirmed. They have to agree to sit in this circle. The students are trained to help them to come to a resolution, and then the students decide what the consequences will be at the end. So it's been very powerful. I've watched the kids run about two or three of the restorative circles, and the training between that and training, and they really, really don't lead it at all. They just ask questions, and they get them to decide on how they're gonna correct the problem at the end of it. Very powerful. Now, if the student who is the perpetrator engages a second time in this, then they do programming outside of us with Mercer County Prosecutor's Office. It's still therapeutic, it's still learning. The third time, it might be something more stringent. So that's how it works. They're hoping to expand it to the high school, and Ms. Principal Riley is on board with that for next year. You're welcome.
I had a couple of quick questions. Seriously, huh? Thank you so much for this presentation and for answering my questions by email. I really appreciate that. I did wanna just follow up on Drew's point here and say, I really appreciate the fact that we're scaling up the restorative justice program. I think there's a lot of evidence supporting restorative justice as a way to reduce out-of-school suspensions. And so I look forward to seeing those numbers come down as we scale that up and use that in more places throughout our school system. I did have one question just following up on the data around restraint. So one of the things that I had noticed is that last year, we had seen, sort of throughout the whole school year, there were twelve restraints among students, and that number has jumped up quite a bit this school year. And so I know I followed up with you by email, but that was really helpful context for me to hear. So I'm wondering if either Ms. D'Nardo or you, Dr. Therese, would be willing to just share a little bit about why are we seeing that jump in the numbers now?
Absolutely. So of the eighteen restraints that we have documented, there's actually been nine students across the district who have had intense moments where staff, where the child was at risk of harming themselves or others. And after a series of de-escalation techniques that they followed through the safety care training, there was a danger, and they had to put their hands on the child. That could be that a child was trying to elope the school. They're trying to run out of the school toward, especially like if you think about Hopewell Elementary School, you think about Tollgate, Bear Tavern even, there's a little bit more space, but not much. They're running out towards the road. We have to go after them, and we have to put our hands on them. So that was several of them. And then we also, of the eighteen, nine, there were nine students. So we've had a couple of children who have come to us with some intense issues and trauma. And we are working through that with them, and they've had a couple of bad days. But I can report that they're really learning and doing well with us. So we are overly cautious. We work very hard to communicate. When we do have to put our hands on our children, we complete a form. We notify the parents that day, and we share that form with the parents. Full transparency, because again, our goal is just to keep them safe and others safe.
Thank you. I really appreciate you sharing that. And then my last question, Mr. DiStefano, for you, is I heard you mention that digital wellness is really one of the areas you think we should be focusing our efforts and our energy on moving forward as we think about student safety and wellness. And so I'm just curious, thinking about this Digital Wellness Committee, do you anticipate any sort of policy recommendations coming out of that that we as a board could potentially think about implementing moving forward?
It's a very good question. No specific policy recommendations right now. I think that's the type of thing that we're always thinking about, though, is what we can do to stay on top of what we're seeing in our students. I don't have any specific policy recommendations, though, right now at this point. We have been planning for the spring and different presenters that we can, you know, partner with and programming that we can put in place, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else before we go to public comment? Thank you, Mr. DiStefano. Okay, with that, we will have public comments specifically on we will have public comments specifically on this report. So I will quickly read our... So members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter from... Oh, sorry. I did... Members of the public are invited to address the board on specifically the report for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open and I'll defer to our timekeeper for any direction.
Just for anyone who hasn't made public comment, at 30 seconds I will hold up yellow and when your time is up, I will hold up red. And that's for all public comments.
Any comments? Okay. All right, seeing no comments, we will close this public comment section. We're going to go ahead and move on to the presentation and adoption of the 2024 tentative, underscore tentative budget and special opportunity for public comment following this. Oh, yes, I will. Okay, Dr. Trese, did you have any comments leading in?
Just as a preface to the budget conversation, and this is separate from the referendum conversation tonight. This is the budget for the upcoming school year. This is a time of year that I work very closely with my building level administration, central offices, as we come up with and we strike up this proposal for the budget that we're presenting to the Board of Education tonight. The slides that Mr. Colavita will be sharing with you should be somewhat familiar, but we now have our state aid numbers so that we were able to give you a full budget tonight on what our proposal is based on what we've been allotted by the state, which those numbers came out recently. We plan to keep most of what we hold dear here in this district. It has come to us clearly through both the surveys that you've answered for us, comments that we've had in our strategic planning sessions, comments in our emails, comments that we've had in public session, that the things that we have here in Hopewell are priorities for the district. Those students that we honor tonight, those programs that we have in place that provide those, the extensive programming that we have in place to make sure that our students are safe and that we build a climate that is welcoming for all students as best we can, that is what we're talking about tonight. Maintaining those priorities and the cost for maintaining those priorities, which are very unique to Hopewell and quite frankly, are not offered in a lot of districts around us. So I just want you to keep in mind that with all those things as we're listening tonight and remain open to what we're presenting. Everyone working here tonight is committing to maintaining the district's prestige, reputation, the rigor that's here. And we'll also provide the rationale behind our recommendations and why the cost is what it is. We're open to your comments and feedback, so we'll also leave an opportunity for public comment after this report as well.
Okay, so tonight, tonight we'll be approving our tentative budget. After tonight, it must go to the county superintendent. By Wednesday, it'll go tomorrow. And then they will review it. They may have questions, they may not. They may want to make some modifications to some of the documents that go with it. They may not. But ultimately, the period of time between tonight and the public hearing when we strike the final budget will either reflect or not reflect changes that the county wants. And we'll report those to you. Very seldom does they make any changes to what we submit. There is time for the board to make final changes if they so choose. If we do change the budget, we have to give a detailed narrative over why. This is the, you know, the last approval before final. Again, we've always started off with our mission statement. But this is what guides what we do. And I've had a lot of conversations recently with some board members about this particular process that we do. This is where we've been. We start, we start, my office starts in the summer, getting ready to roll the budget over to start the planning process. But with the board, we start usually in the fall. We talk about our big budget drivers, CNI, which is what we do. Special education has become a big driver in recent years, our facilities. With the referendum, we know that that's a big driver in the budget. We like to set the expectations for those particular areas early in the process. We meet with our budget managers throughout this process. As Dr. Trese said, she meets with her principals and her other administrative staff, but also with those folks in the offices who are ordering supplies and know what's going on with price increases and things like that. So we include everybody in the process, not just Dr. Trese and myself. We did have our first work session with the board on February 20th where we discussed in great detail, a lot of the things that were driving the budget. We'll get into that in a second. Shortly thereafter, we received our state aid allocation. The district did get approximately $500,000 more than we got last year. I had anticipated closer to $800,000 or $900,000 in additional aid. That did not happen. I was thankful that we didn't lose money, like some of my colleagues who are expecting rather large increases in state aid but received cuts. So there is really been no rhyme or reason to some of this. There's a formula that's derived by the state and how state aid is allocated and they don't share it. They don't share it in great detail anyway. And when it's operated by members of my association, it takes forever to get it. We still have not yet gotten the formula yet and how they calculated the numbers this year. So again, fortunate that we got an additional $500,000. It seems to be a wild card. Next year's, with the full implementation of the S2 law, it was a seven-year phase in where we got additional money each year. It's done. So we're going to see what happens next year. S2, it's just that it was a law, Senate Resolution 2, where they started to take money from the districts that were overfunded and give it to the districts that were underfunded. We were an underfunded district and we were the beneficiary over the last seven years of additional state aid. Many of my colleagues in the districts that we worked closely with lost millions of dollars. So we're, now that we're fully implemented, we'll see how it's going to turn out this year. Brings us to tonight, where we're going to adopt a tentative budget. If there's anything else the board wants to discuss, we do have the remainder of March and April to discuss any changes that might want to be made. And just some of the priorities that we used this year when we were building the budget. Obviously, Dr. Trese, we said we wanted to, the budget to reflect our values, but we wanted to maintain all of the programs that we've built over these years. All those programs and services that make Hopewell unique. The academic program, our class sizes. We also want to meet our obligations to our staff. We have a well-educated and trained staff that we want to make sure that we're meeting their salary obligations and make them paid to manage with other districts. We also need to continue to evaluate all of our programs. That's done usually over the summer, but throughout the year, we examine the different kinds of programs and staff we need to implement that curriculum. And we want to make sure that we're preparing a budget that has some space for unknowns. Because as you know, every year, something pops up that we need to address. The budget prepares us for that as well. Some of the things, again, driving this budget, inflation. I know Mark and I had a conversation at the striking of last year's budget and I thought inflation was going to kind of settle in. It really hasn't yet. It's really still driving the budget in the areas of a lot of these things. Transportation is one of them. 6% increase on transportation expenses this year largely driven by the CPI for transportation. Insurance, both medical, health benefit type insurance, but also property casualty insurance. The metrics on that continue to soar into the 10% to 15% range. But we do what we can with that. We do publicly bid our insurance and those are where the numbers are falling. So we're doing everything we can to keep the rates down. That's just what the market is bearing at this point. The state keeps mandating additional insurances that we must carry as a school district. And things like cyber, cyber insurances and environmental insurances are also driving these costs. Again, we're not going to dwell too much on facility and maintenance, but we are doing a referendum to try to help alleviate some of these costs. But we have three buildings that are nearing 100 years and our youngest building right now is over 20 years old. So these are going to be a stalwart in any facility-based organization. Special education is a driver. We do the best we can by bringing students back into district where we feel that we can educate them better and more efficiently than some outside placements, but there are certain students that we can't do that for. Those tuitions are quite costly. And the state has allowed those to escalate, sometimes greater than 10 or 15% per year. But again, we place our students where they are best served. Staffing is always an issue. That's what we do. To educate students, you must have staff in place. So we are doing everything we can to do what we can with the most. But making sure that we're in compliance. Technology grows, as you guys know in your own lives. Everything is driven by technology, from our cars, the fire alarms, the TVs. Everything we use has got some kind of connection to technology and our technology folks have been inundated with the amount of devices that they're expected to maintain, both internal and devices, but also external devices. So it's a huge, one of our biggest growing budget drivers. We are dealing with growth in Hopewell Township. We have seen a few students enter from some of the newer neighborhoods, but we have not seen huge growth. We're driving some changes in the way we group students right now. But we are still anticipating that that will be coming in the near future. And again, something that I've been trying to drive home to this board is the utilization of savings to balance the budget. I liken it to the fact of if you were to get a windfall from Aunt Mary and you use it to buy a house that you can't afford. You have it for a moment until that savings runs out and then all of a sudden you can't afford the mortgage payment. So you need to be careful with how much of that type of revenue you place in the budget, non-recurring revenue. Curriculum obviously is a huge driver in our budget. I'm going to turn it over to Vicki to talk about just a little bit about those. What you have coming up, you knew it was coming.
So a lot of the things that drive our curriculum budget are due to the NJDOE changes. So for example, in September, we are expected to roll out the new English Language Arts standards as well as mathematics standards. So that will involve changes in, potentially involve changes in programmatic, in programs as well as curriculum writing. Additionally, there are state mandates that come out, like the climate change, and they just recently adopted a grief mandate. So we will have to adjust our curriculum and program to adopt those. Other additional needs are technology subscriptions keep on going up in cost, which is a strain on the budget. We are adding the STEAM exploratory at all four elementary schools. So that will take a, that would be curriculum writing plus four additional staff members. And we will be utilizing some training if we adopt new programs as well as the adoption of a new master schedule at the elementary level. Will also involve just training about how to adjust this teaching for any changes in the time constraints.
Again, our curriculum is dynamic and constantly in change. And the state drives it and we drive other things that we find that are valuable to us. As I mentioned, transportation, that is, that 5.81% is a state-driven number. It's a formula. But we must renew all of our bus routes at no more than 5.81%. You can come in less, but if you were a bus company knowing that the maximum they could go up is 5.81%, would you come in any less? We asked and they said no. We could go back out to rebid, but history usually shows that when you do that, it irritates them and they go higher than 5.81%. We are fortunate that we do have our buses. Many of my colleagues are losing their routes. Their companies are closing due to lack of drivers, lack of being able to get drivers and the high cost of maintaining a transportation service industry. Many of my colleagues right before school and over the past several years have lost their entire transportation fleet. The company comes to them and says, we are going out of business or we are no longer working in this area of the state. It happened to us several years ago when the first student left Central Jersey and went south. We lost all of our first student runs. We were able to have them picked up by another company, but it's difficult. So again, those are driving our costs. Really kind of outside. What's that? Oh, yeah, no, he's out. Again, I talked a little bit about health insurance, but again, the market in these areas is a huge driver and costs that are really things that we need to do. Workers' compensation claims, again, the laws regarding workers' compensation have become extremely liberal. There really isn't an ability to fight cases anymore. If someone gets hurt in your building, you're going to be responsible for something. And again, we are doing the best we can to negotiate. We bid these out. And we have been very fortunate that while it's more than it has been in past years, our self-insured program is running better than the state program and pretty much slightly under budget this year. So I'm happy. I monitor it weekly. My office gets irritated with me because I'm like, did the bills come in yet? They come in weekly, usually on a Wednesday, and I want to see how we're tracking week by week. See if we're running on budget because those are money that we don't want to spend right now. Again, a big driver. Facilities and maintenance, again, we talked about it. We've had some catastrophic failures this year from sewer lines to well pumps first water heaters, pipes that we're going to be doing in this building, other buildings. We're constantly trying to stay ahead of these kinds of things that aging buildings tend to do. You know, caveat, we're going to be addressing the major things in the referendum and hopefully it passes. There are still things that we are not addressing and that we're going to try to continue to pick off on an annual basis. Special ed, again, out of district tuition continues to rise. Our program, Paulette, do you want to touch on any of this stuff? Or do you pretty much have it there?
I mean, I think that it's, we are known throughout the state. We have developed some really strong in-house special programming for our students that are receiving special education. And for example, our autism classes. You know, if you think about, we actually have a K through H21 program for students with autism. And I'm talking about when we look at the spectrum, those students who have autism that are more cognitively involved. And if you, to house classrooms and to do right by these children and to follow the New Jersey code, we cannot have more than six children in a classroom. When we hit three, we have to have paraprofessionals in the classroom. To be able to implement applied behavioral analysis, which the research shows is how these children can learn best, especially early on, it's almost a one-to-one ratio. So to do these programs and to do them well and to be able to give our children in our community with these challenges access to learning, we have to build these programs and they are expensive. But they're learning and they're growing in their neighborhood schools.
And, you know, again, Paulette and I have done the math on this and we actually, while the programs, she said there, some of them are almost one-to-one, it's actually cheaper and better to do it in-house than it would be to send them to an outside program. But again, a lot of times, the reason I put this slide up there is because special education is, if it comes up, if we identify a new student, we must take care of that child. We can't push it off. We can't delay it. We can't delay it. We've got to have a budget that, that allows for those kinds of things. Paulette does a great job with that. Again, staffing, we talked about that. We must make sure we have proper staffing within state guidelines, those kinds of things. We're dealing with a national teacher shortage, which means that student, teachers before, when you offered them a salary, they were so happy to take it. Now it's, is that the best you can do? And we've had to let some of the candidates that we wanted walk away because we couldn't offer them what they were able to shop around for. Again, you may think it's, well, why wouldn't you just give them the money to get them to stay? There's a lot of legalities in that and you must maintain consistency when hiring at, at certain levels of experience. If you offer one person this and another person that with the same levels of experience, it's, it's not the way you need to operate properly standing. So we're very careful with how we do that. Again, our, and a lot, a lot of things too, our staff comes here and they stay. We get, when we get staff, it's a great environment to work in. Staff members come and they, they stay. They don't look around for other districts. We take on features from other districts which they don't like, but, but that's what happens with our staff. Again, we talked about technology, the sheer number of devices that we have, the software that we have found necessary for generating metrics and evaluating our students, conducting off-site meetings. All those kinds of things have escalated in cost post pandemic. We've done quite a bit to control costs. We do, do what we can with health benefits. Again, we've talked a lot about these things already. We've reduced staff and administration when enrollments have allowed. We've gotten rid of some of our ancillary technology by moving to a Google environment where we're using the Google devices, which are a lot cheaper than, than regular PCs or laptops. We virtualize things when we can, but that, that type of environment, our, our technology department is very forward thinking when it comes to that. They've saved us a lot of money when it comes to our, our direct connection to the internet, our broadband. Just done very strategically as well as our phone service. So we've done as much as we can with technology, but maintaining those one-to-one devices is costly at times. We do what we can with energy. We've been, most of the HVAC items that we've been installing over the time are higher efficiency energy. We've noticed that with the new boilers that we've installed, that the gas usage is significant. And we're hoping that that energy usage will continue to see reductions when we do the remainder of the HVAC projects with the passing of the referendum. But that's been a great help to us. And again, our facilities department is able to handle quite a bit of the repairs on our own rather than going out and bidding time and materials and having some, an outside company do the work. We are able to do it more efficiently on our own. While we don't want to, we have made lists over the years on things that we would do if we, if the board wanted us to cut further. Not that these are not, again, in any particular order, but these are some of the savings that could be seen if we were to reduce. Some of the, we might say nice to haves, other folks may call them essentials, but these are what, these are the items that are outside of what's called the thorough and efficient education as defined by the state. These are extras. Other districts don't have these kinds of things, but we do. Just wanted you to know that we've looked, we've examined these things, discussed them in both the board and committee level. If we were to reduce those things, what the impact would be to our student population. We are proud to have co-curriculars at all levels from the, from the, from the elementary levels to middle school and to high school. A broad range of all kinds of programs from athletics to theater. We had the theater students in tonight, but we have a ton of activities that students can participate in at the school. Our class sizes, again, are extremely favorable compared to neighboring districts. Some are in the teens. It's unheard of in a lot of districts in this day and age with, with shrinking budgets. Those are some of the things that, that would be impacted if we were to reduce costs even further. Just a kind of a graphical understanding of where we go and where the money goes. So if you start at 12 o'clock and you start with athletics and co-curricular and swing all the way around to staff benefits, those are all direct costs that go into educating our students. One might argue that the other, the transportation piece also, you know, there's a very small amount of money that goes into the, kind of the business side operations of the district. But most of the money, more than 75% is going directly into the instruction of our students. Which is where it should go. Kind of graphically, if you're looking at it or in a chart, 98 million of that money is going directly into our operating expenses. The debt service is like your mortgage. It's the, the last remaining mortgage we have is on the 2016 referendum with George buyer in 2030. The capital outlay is very small at this point. That's basically equipment and an assessment from the state on money that they've given us. They give you grant money, but then they charge you interest on the payment back, on paying it back. They didn't tell you that when you borrowed it, but that's in the debt. And obviously our revenues, the $102 million plus that we use is based upon state, federal aid and also local aid. You see a reduction in federal aid for next year. That is real. We are no longer a Title I school, at least for next year. We will not be a Title I school, so we'll be adjusting our programming to maintain some of those programs. We've already spoken with the high school, which was our Title I school last year, to try to maintain those programs with the lack of Title I money. It's only about $80,000. I say only, but money is money. Our local tax levy is made up of taxes, obviously, and also a waiver that we're using for health benefits. That's how we're able to come in higher than 2%. We do need that waiver this year. State aid, as you can see, was about 8%, almost 8% higher than it was last year. That's also debt service aid that we got for the last referendum. The state is kicking in about 30% on the last referendum we did. The number that concerns me, and we can talk a little bit more about it, is the amount of fund balance and savings that we have in the budget. It's less than last year, which is, is on a positive trend, but it's still high. And as one of my committee members said, so we're going in next year, kind of in the hole. No, we're not, we're not in the hole, but we're borrowing money from this year and putting it to next year. And that's all contingent upon being able to do it again next year unless we can start to find ways of reducing costs or eliminating programs to get that number down. My number, my happy place would be probably in the area of 2.5 million in there. It's a little bit higher than I, than I'd like and I'm hoping that we see savings in health benefits that can help hit that. But it's, it's a source of some lost sleep for me that the, that the number is climbing. I'm glad it's lower, but it's still climbing. The miscellaneous revenue is interest that we earn on our, on our savings that's grown this year. Reasons up 40, we, we actually changed banks last year. We were getting maybe 0.25% in interest from our old bank. When we switched, we were getting over five and we're still getting around 4.8 in interest. So we're earning quite a bit of money. Now I did get, unfortunately, I did get an email today that the Fed is expected to cut the rate about one and a half percent before the end of 2024. I did not budget the entire amount that we were going to earn this year. I was conservative with that. I do think that we're going to be earning well over 3% interest throughout 2025 when this budget is pending. But that's why it climbed. It also includes tuition revenue that we get for running some of the programs that Paulette was talking about. We also have some of our staff members bring students here. We have facility rentals that is involved in that. We do take in money. We have a part of one of the old contracts we had with staff members is retirees could still get their health benefits through us and retirement, they pay full, we don't support it, they pay full rate, but we get revenue from that. We get money from some federal programs like E-rate, which helps us with technology type purchases. But that's pretty much it. Facility rentals and they can provide that. But that, no, that's, that's state aid. That's state aid. So that's, that number is unlimited, what we can draw in. But we're, you know, could we draw more people to rent facilities? We could, but we found that the, the trade-off was that you get people who don't really care about your facilities and they treat them as such. So we don't do that. We used to get dance competitions and things like that, but they destroyed our band rooms. They destroyed a lot of things, so it's not worth it. We try to tend to try to keep that local. That's a good question. This is kind of how it breaks down, kind of getting at what we've got to it. And there is also the transportation money that we do charge. We do get some jointures from some outside districts. We also pay jointures. For example, Lawrence has a bus and they're going to go through Hopewell on their way to Hunterdon County and they'll pick up kids in Hamilton and Ewing and Husk and drive them up to Hunterdon County whereas we may take a bus and go south to Cherry Hill and we'll pick up kids in Ewing and Lawrence and drive those kids there. This is what it looks like. Our total general fund tax levy is going up 2.7%. Our total overall tax levy is going up 2.6% driven by the debt service going down a 12% just based upon the way that that schedule was. Again, this just, this is an illustration of how we've used surplus over the years. I had gotten to a good place in 1920 and 2021. I was even 21, 22 and then we started to climb up again there, knocking it back down considerably this year. Again, the number where I'd like to see it is no higher than two and a half percent. Let's see, I'm comfortable where it is, but I don't want to see it go any higher than that. Again, surplus, the best place to use it is non-recurring expenses, one time. But there were some things in the curriculum that we needed to do. There was the STEM, we talked, Vicki talked about it, the STEM mandate or that we wanted to put back. We found value in it. That's, there's a cost to that. That's that, I think. This is what it's going to do to taxes. There is an increase. The funny thing is if you add them all up, and I, I, I left the paper on my desk, but if you add them up, I think Hopewell Township over the, the life of this is 27 cents. I think Hopewell Borough is like 31 cents and Pennington Borough is like 32 cents. So while Pennington Borough had, they had a couple of zeros, they had a couple of negatives the last couple of years with the way the valuations come around, they get hammered in the last two years, but they had gone years with minimal. The township kind of goes steadily along and they haven't dropped there in one year. It's, it all kind of evens out. Over the years, they're somewhere in the area of 28 cents to 31 cents over that, that period of time. So it kind of evens out over the years. But we did come off the 4.1% and getting it back down from what we did last year. That's the end. At this point, we can open it up for questions from the board. The side one.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I feel like we've been doing a lot of reviewing of this, so a lot of working it around. Well, a lot of questions have gotten answered as well. One of the things that I, I think it is important, Dr. Treese, you touched on it earlier. You go back to the, it's the, oh, oh, yeah. So right there, yeah.
So I, I think it's important, I mean, a lot of our discussion as a board, in addition to referendum conversations, is really talking about the quality of education and the, the cost. But we, we say and have been saying ongoingly that no one in the community wants to give up our, the quality of education, the number of programs, the extracurriculars. And I think it is, it is our responsibility as a board to communicate clearly to the community that, that the quality and impact of taxes, it, it in some respects is not sustainable, right? Leaving everything just as it is, you still have all of the effects that Mr. Colavita touched on. Transportation, inflation, these things largely outside of our control. Also, the, you know, things like shortages of teachers and the willingness for veteran teachers, which were, were happily pulling in, they're coming in at a higher salary than our young, young students out of school coming to us as teachers. So there are all these, these fine factors that we have kind of, I wouldn't say we've glossed over them, but we've all felt pretty clearly quality, yes. We believe in quality here at Hopewell Valley. And we don't want to continue to gloss over them anymore because referendum, no referendum. Moving forward, the level of programming that we have or this class sizes that we have are going to be a challenge to afford if everything outside of our control continues, right? So I, I just wanted to make sure that I, I come to you, whoever's watching, make sure we share that we're, we're paying attention. We're paying attention to the details. How can we maintain the highest quality and be responsible for keeping our buildings at the appropriate safety level so quality of education isn't impacted? We're not losing school days. So I, I think, I'll leave it at that, but underscoring the point here is that it is our financial responsibility to convey we're looking at every opportunity because it's not getting any easier. And we won't say broad brush quality. We're going to start coming to the community and saying, testing for, is this quality? Is this important to you? Can we maintain it? Do we need to cut back here? So we're going to continue that dialogue this year and into the future because we need your assessment as a community on what that mission statement means to you when it comes to quality education. Does that make sense? Anybody, do I want to underscore it on the board? Do we hit it?
I, I think that one, one thing that we don't perhaps talk enough about in terms of quality is the kind of learning that we're going to be looking at. In other words, Bob and I had a conversation the other day about empowerment. And to what extent is, and that's some part of our big, our mission, but to what extent is empowerment something that we can do with, with less money or that we have to do with less money? And, and the kinds of, of instructional contexts and processes that we need to formulate in order to establish not the, not, you know, not class size, not particular program experiences, but the specific kinds of learning that we want to see in our students, or that our public wants to see, our parents and our, our community wants to see. I think that's part, that needs to be part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Okay. With that, we're going to open public comments specifically on the budget. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any, I'm sorry, I did it again. Specifically on the budget for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open. Seeing no movement out there, I will say public comment is closed. All right. I need a motion and a second to vote.
Dr. Lillicent.
Yes.
Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Dr. Wilson. Dr. Genovace.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
At this time, we also have an open public comment, which is on any matter. So members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may opt to take the matter up at future meetings so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
Kate Hamm, Pennington. Many times it has been stated that this district's administration and Board of Education wholeheartedly support equity, honesty, and transparency, yet some actions do not align. Oftentimes, questions are asked, and an email reply contains a lot of words and says nothing. Or even worse, the individual inquiring is completely ignored, hearing crickets. This does not foster a community of equity, honesty, and transparency. In regards to an email which I sent to the district superintendent and nine board members on March 7th, in which the only response was an automated out-of-response, out-of-office response from one individual, I drew your attention to the overwhelming concern surrounding half-days in this school district. As they currently stand, equity falls by the wayside. I know, last month's calendar presentation ignited some to rejoice when learning that Hopewell presents only 10 half-days while other nearby districts have as many as 20. Knowing the lack of accuracy, I researched this information, and what I discovered lacks transparency. Many of those school districts with higher numbers indicate that the number includes any school or combination of schools having a half-day. They also indicate that makeup days are often half-days to fulfill the state requirement. At a glance, when one looks at Hopewell's calendar, it appears that there are only 10 half-days. The number omits the half-day in the fall, when half of CHS has a delayed opening due to PSATs. It also omits the half-days in June, when CHS students take finals, while other buildings are still in school full days. And just last week, 3/4 of CHS population was delayed two days prior to an early release day for juniors to test. That's a minimum of an additional five days where families of CHS students are affected. Not to mention, some of those days did not provide four or more academic hours for students as mandated by the state. Those delayed openings pose an additional cost too to the district because all of the bus routes run again two or three hours later. I have previously highlighted that the half-days caused the removal of PAC and recitation at the secondary level. Students who receive related services during this time are unable to do so. Students eligible for free and reduced lunch are left without so on early release days. The families of secondary students unable to travel home and remain home alone are challenged. How is this equitable? The majority of you, sit around the table here, were voted in by the community to be a voice for all matters brought forth. Every one of you board members is an individual taxpayer here. You can always remove yourself from the table and speak as a citizen from this side. As I concluded the email, which I sent to you and received no response, contradictions exist. This community is concerned about transparency, honesty, and equity. How can we, students, parents, guardians, and taxpayers, trust the education of our students when countless contradictions exist? What has always been isn't necessarily right, nor is it right for the times we are in. Reconsideration is necessary to align with the initiatives being supported. Thank you.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, 7 Wydell Drive in Pennington. I would ask the board tonight if you could share with us why you support a referendum vote in September and not in November during the general election. As was stated tonight, money is money. Holding a special election will mean taxpayers will pay the cost of this special election. The special bond election in 2016 costs $30,000. Poll workers' salaries have increased 50% since 2016. Inflation has increased the cost of all goods, services, and products. A 50% increase means the September vote will cost at least $45,000. Early in-person voting will not be available. This disregards the principles of the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act. President Biden encouraged the Senate to pass this bill, which protects elections from voter suppression, increases voter turnout, and prevents changes that reduce, relocate, or consolidate voting opportunities and locations. Fewer citizens vote in special elections. In 2016, voter turnout was less than 17%. For the turnout in November, it was 65%, which percentage clearly demonstrates the will of the voters. Having the bond referendum on the ballot at the general election will mean no additional cost for the taxpayers, and it respects the purpose and intent of the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act. Why are you concerned about a knee-jerk reaction? If the referendum vote is in November, are you concerned that those who vote in November are not able to make an educated and informed decision? If the board believes in the need for this referendum, then present your reasons to the community through all means possible. Convince us that the extra $10,000 to $20,000 tax burden each household will bear over the next 20 years is what's best for the children. But let us vote in November. It makes fiscal sense, it protects election integrity, and it honors the goals of the John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to any responses.
I'm going to refer to Mrs. Kosis's question first about the September election. It is not uncommon for school districts to run special elections in September to appeal to the public for funding for referendums that are tied to facilities, especially tied to facilities of maintenance. It has to do with the timing of, there is also a strategy to keep it away from any election where it's volatile or where it may get lost. And it also has to do for timing for when we can get the vote hopefully approved by the community, and when we can go out to bid to contractors to actually get the work started. Mr. Colavita shared, just in his slide presentation, that we are going to be experiencing some growth very, very soon. And we're hoping that the public is going to support as we go out and campaign, and there will be lots of campaigning opportunities for us to explain why we need this. We will be having lots of talks. We are going to appeal to those members of the community that may not have students in district. And we want to hopefully convince everyone that this is something that's valuable to everyone, and that we can get a vote for yes, and that we can go out to bid before we miss the opportunity because they've accepted other contracts with other districts who have done it in September. And then now we're pushed another year out to start what we have to do at Bear Tavern, which needs to happen sooner than later. What needs to happen in some of these buildings sooner than later with HVAC, with roofing, with some of the issues that we have around safety. So that's the reason why we're choosing to do it in September. Mr. Colavita, did I miss any other point as I'm talking about this?
A lot of it is, like I said, is driven by getting us hopefully approved and out to the contractors, and getting the process started for bonding money. I mean, the bonding process is extensive, we need to go out to bid for that, getting us lined up to be able to do it. Again, if we didn't do September, we'd probably be pushing out, we'd lose the entire summer of 2025.
So those, that seven weeks, eight weeks?
It's big.
It is big.
And I believe there was some discussion as well about the cost of the opportunity of the bid, not just losing different competitive options, but also the cost, right?
Well, the earlier you go out, the more competitive the bids are.
Yeah.
When you go out late and other bids have already been awarded, they're going to look and see what they can get. You may not, and you may have companies that would have bid that have already, you know, they've already used up their allowance. School contractors are governed by the Department of Labor. They only have a certain amount of work that they can actually bid on. They don't have unlimited work. They're certified, say, this company's certified for $5 million worth of work, $10 million worth of work. So they're limited, and they could use up their allowance and not be able to bid on the project. So the earlier you go, the more advantageous the bid is.
Got it. Any other questions on that?
And then finally to Ms. Hamm about the calendar. We did receive your email, and we also addressed those things, I believe, in two meetings, two separate meetings which are posted. I can't give you an answer that's going to say that we're going to eliminate the number of half-days because those are dates that the district needs to do what we need to do in terms of training our staff, in terms of administering assessments. All school districts have half-days. We had a calendar committee that looked at it extensively, where we had representation from across the spectrum of parents, and everyone was a working parent. We had Strive PTO parents, we had teachers who sat on that committee and administrators. We did our due diligence and research, and this was the best we can come up with. There's not, there's not going to ever be a perfect world where everyone gets everything when we negotiate these calendars. We will continue to look at those in the future. But the calendars that we have now meet all the needs as best we can of all the feedback we got from the community. So we thank you for your email.
Okay. With that, public comment is now closed. And we do need to go back and approve, I missed approving and accepting the report on violence, vandalism, and stuff. So can I get a motion and a second?
Roll call vote, Dr.?
Dr. Colavita. Mr. Colavita.
Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters. Dr. Resnick. Mr. Slotman. Dr. Wilson. Dr. Genovace. Mr. Kapadia. Dr. Lillicent. Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes. All right. Moving on, any old business items? Seeing none, I need a first and a second to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Consent agenda items are approved. We'll go ahead and move into our committee update, starting with finance.
All right. So we had invited the mayors of the three municipalities in the valley to our last meeting to go over the details of the proposed referendum, to answer their questions. In fact, we had moved the meeting to an 8:00 AM start so that it was to increase the, or minimize the chance of there being a conflict, there are old business people. We did have the mayor of Hopewell Borough show up, together with the Hopewell Borough administrator. Pennington sent the president of the Borough Council. And then we had a Hopewell Township council member, Michael Ruhger, at the meeting, but not the mayor. We really dedicated pretty much the whole meeting to going through the presentation package that we have for the referendum, answering their questions, having a discussion. And that's pretty much it. The only other item of note is Mr. Ruhger said that he was named the liaison to the Board of Education by the Hopewell Township council. So I suppose we're going to be seeing a lot of him when we reach out to the council.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Resnick. Moving on to personnel.
All right. So a relatively quick meeting this week. We've got some things on the agenda for some future months. First, we just want to talk about four retirements that we have. Ellen Davis, Dawn Wheeler, Wilda Dunne, and Anne Adams. All four, two of the four have been around for quite some time, and we're very, very lucky to have futures of six of the districts who have been around as Dr. Treese alluded to. So we always want to be able to celebrate those retirements as they move on. We spent a little bit of time talking about, with two of our new committee members, just some of the things that we spend time talking about during that committee meeting, and we've got updates on some upcoming items, excuse me, related to some negotiations and some other specific topics. But other than that, it was a relatively short meeting, but I'm sure we'll have some longer ones coming up in the next several months. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. We do need to approve all personnel actions and, no, no, that's okay. I stepped over it myself. Also, extracurricular appointments, so need a first and a second. All right, roll call. Can we do both at the same time? Okay. Yes. Okay. Moving on to edcom.
Yeah, contrasting the relatively short personnel meeting, we had a longer edcom meeting. So a few things. So Katie Schooly, a special ed teacher at Timberland, is currently doing her PhD at the School of Education at Rutgers. She's working on her dissertation focusing on understanding special ed students' needs from both the academic side and the social aspects. So she's going to use mixed methods and gathering data from some of our special ed students. The committee approved her request and provided recommendations on research design and thinking about how her findings can benefit our district. They'd like to share her findings and see how some of the areas for improvement can be implemented. And then Ms. Lewis, Baldwin, the supervisor of Word and Languages and ESL, discussed the languages we offer in our district and in comparison to neighboring districts. We're doing pretty well in that regard. In particular, 50 students received the seal of bilingualcy for Chinese, French, German, Hindi, and a number of other languages. It really shows that our educators, our teachers are doing a great job, and also is, I'm sure is a reflection of parental support in many of our homes. And then on the national language exams, 75 of our students were awarded medals for their achievement. And then Ms. Baldwin also shared the multilingual learner program, its philosophy, the learner identification, and also that language acquisition is not a separate subject, but rather systematically supported, practiced in our district. And then the agenda item that took most of the time was report from Mr. Steve Wolfing. It's a follow-up to the changes made to the sixth grade math placement. So Mr. Wolfing- Um, so Mr. Wolfing showed, uh, suggested changes as a response to prior discussions we had, um, both here in larger group meetings and in the edcom meeting. Um, so there, there are some proposed changes, for example, um, on Algebra Part A, students entering seventh grade who fall below the, um, a set of prescribed grades may apply for a waiver, um, from the department supervisor by June first, and then the number of, uh, the type of standardized tests used to, uh, place students has also been expanded. Um, overall, the, the committee raised a lot of questions about the cutoff, uh, set at ninety-five percent at this point. Uh, eh, the entire purpose for going through this exercise and, um, proposing changes is really to help expand the pathways for our students to, um, take more advanced math classes. Uh, needless to say, there's a lot of variation in students' motivation, their anxiety to go into such classes, the amount of support it requires for them to be successful. But at the get-go, how to design a system that would not, that would not prevent a lot of students from even entering those programs, um, i- is, is problematic. Um, we need to really think about ways to expand such pathways. So, a few specific recommendations were provided to Mr. Wolfing, who will then work with his team to come up with, um, additional, um, recommended solutions at the next step. Um, did, did I miss anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Lou. Any questions?
I have a question. That was really detailed, I really appreciate that. So, what percentage of students currently have, based on sort of the current process and the way it's laid out, what percentage of students currently have access to the advanced mathematics courses that you're talking about?
(laughing).
Where our main group of students gets tracked entering middle school. At that point, we're making a decision that has an impact six or seven years into the future, and it is a significant impact because if you are thinking about the kids who wanna pursue college education in STEM fields, not taking an AP Calculus course does significantly disadvantage them both in terms of admissions and when they get there. And so the request is really to look at what we're doing and, um, structure things so that that opportunity is not taken away. There are concerns about accelerating kids too much, especially in, in Algebra One, and Algebra One is a foundation for, um, you know, kids show up in Calculus all the time. If you say, have a AP Calculus exam, it's hard questions in Algebra One, right? But, at the same time, we shouldn't be pre-making that decision when kids enter, right? We should have a structure that allows them to make, them, their parents to make that decision for themselves. And there's all kinds of other issues around that in terms of what types of kids actually get disadvantage, as was shown by the study that was done by Dr. Brooks, or the life entirely. So there's all kinds of issues there. It, it's not a simple issue, but it's just that middle.
Yeah, and Alex, just to clarify, um, that middle track, they can't even take regular Calculus. It's calc, I mean, so it's not just AP Calculus, it's Calculus. If they get tracked, then they stay in that track, right?
So what is the size, do you know the size of that group, Dr. Palitas?
And, and so four after, maths, maths seven is the main track, doesn't get you to Calculus. Algebra A does get you to Calculus. And it does give you two years in middle school to cover what we normally do once you're about to come on. So it's not a bad option overall, right? So I think we're, we're looking where we've asked Mr. Wolfing to look at is around that stuff. And there is the kids that take Algebra One in seventh grade, that's a whole, I mean, yeah, that's a...
That's a whole nother animal.
Yeah, that's a whole other story, though.
Mm-hmm.
Kids who are really good enough, that's not where...
Yes. So what we're looking to do is try to expand in grade six, the number of students we're taking, and if we, we've already, um, Mr. Wolfing's already, um, worked with his team to make some adjustments to how we're identifying kids to go in from fifth grade. Um, and that's how we were losing a lot of our girls and a lot of our, some of our students with just the way the test was designed, is what the study was shown. Um, and then moving forward, um, this, this cut score of ninety-five is just too high, right? And so that needs to be lowered, and we're looking at some other opportunities to capture more students. What we don't wanna do is go too far the other way, and we were in a position at one point where we were pushing kids too fast, and then kids that didn't have the aptitude nor were interested in going to STEM fields ran out of the math levels when they got to high school. They could not do Calculus, and they didn't need Calculus for what they wanted to do, because what you take in grade, uh, six, seven, and eight doesn't count for the requirements to state for graduation. Um, so we want everyone to have the options that they need without pushing kids too far and stressing kids out that don't belong, um, and they need those skills built so that they can be, um, successful in math. So we're hoping to have the, the best of both worlds. The committee sent us back to do more work, and, um, we will have a better, a better program for you, uh, next month when we present.
Since we got into the details, one more thing that I will add, which was a, I think, in my understanding of fairly, of fair consensus, the use of a waiver should be something which is an exception and not like, hey, Darren, this is one of the tools that you can have. It should be an exception, and in fact, it should be just like we discussed before, where there are rules and limitations we're putting in at the high school around the use of the waivers, right? They should be there at the middle school as well, and I think that should go along with making some of the other changes.
Could I just, uh, very quickly, just wanted to say, as somebody who's sort of living with a child who's going through this in a, like, real time, uh, I just wanna say thanks, because I think the ninety-five percent is, is, you know, it's, it's a tough, it, it puts a lot of stress on those kids, for sure. So, I appreciate that you're...
Guess why, it's my pet.
So, I just wanna say thank you.
That's two kids that lived through it real.
I have a, I have a pet, so I, I'm sure that she'll be looking at this next year as well. But I, I appreciate, um, I appreciate working on it.
No.
Nobody.
Uh, I have a question.
Nobody?
Although, I, I think it's saying something that, because I've also lived through it, that so many of us have lived through the waiver system. Like, it shouldn't be.
I, I've got a question. Um, have, have you ever looked into the sort of experiential project kind of way of introducing kids to complex math processes? I mean, I understand they don't get credit, but, but I know that a lot of times I've gotten kids into pretty good tools with, with, um, some really interesting projects.
I think you're...
Not, you know, they didn't get the...
Should be asking over here.
There we go.
He's the one that makes a lot of noise, she actually makes choices.
How's that sound?
We, um, so it's a little bit challenging. The state requires you to use...
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have requirements, right.
Right, there are, um, there's those requirements they have to fulfill, right? There are... Projects, but I've done a lot of...
Well, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, I've done geology projects, I've done, uh, social justice projects. I'm, I mean, I've, I've worked this software that, that uses Calculus, that has, you have to understand that, you know, limits and, and that sort of thing. But, um, they, they don't get MacDab in the middle of a, you know, al, of advanced, uh, Calculus. I mean, integration and differentiation is a different thing than just thinking about the, the notion of limits and...
Right, it's more applied math.
Yeah, right. So, but, I mean, it's an important skill, it doesn't have to be so...
Yeah.
So much involved as, as an AP course.
Well, well, my, I will say Calculus is not the issue, except as a goal that we don't, or an opportunity that we do not wanna take away in middle, right? Calculus, there is an issue that we briefly mentioned about how we get kids prepared, better prepared for math in general, and less fearful of math.
Yeah, well, that's an important...
But that's a, I think that would have to be a separate discussion from this one, I mean, that's...
Okay, well...
Yeah, I, I, it, it, it's a...
But it just sounded like we weren't getting kids into the math that, that, that they could use in, in, in their future...
No, I think it's more mechanical than that. We were making decisions for kids. We were tracking, if you're familiar with some of the tracking systems... In Europe, we're placing kids on tracks, on a track that was very difficult to get off of, right? Very early in their education career, or in this particular issue, right? And it's not that it's impossible, so it's not widely, right, you're not stuck with it, but... I've always felt that middle school was too early to, to kind of do that, and a lot of kids don't figure out where they are and where they are until they get to high school, and even after that, so...
But I'm with you. I was not good at math, and I wish I would have had more experiential learning opportunities. Well, oh, yeah. All right, thank you for that discussion. Um, let's go ahead and move on to community relations.
Uh, we did, uh, essentially three things. One, we talked about some things, ways to talk about the referendum, pretty much about the, the reasons between November and September. Another thing we talked about is, was the start of the conversation, was about empowerment. Um, I think that, uh, given our mission statement, that, that there's a lot that we can do with community to support the empowerment of our students. And finally, um, community communication. We, we were thinking that it, we need to get out, we need to listen to people, we need to hear what they're saying. And, and, uh, Dr. Reese gave us a, just, just getting guidelines for us to make sure we work, do it right. So, with, those were the three things that went on.
Yes, so what he means by that is, um, uh, Dr. Wilson and, and many of the other board members really enjoyed when we were interviewing, um, when some of the candidates were asking them about their experience and why they were involved with the board, and feeling like you wanna get out in the community and talk to community members and just be out there like sort of a, meet your board member. However, as a board member individually, you have to be careful. Um, so, um, our, our board attorney's gonna give us some guidelines about what you can talk about, what you can't, um, without the full, uh, court of the board. Um, but definitely their intentions of getting out in the public and community and, and talking to you all in a more informal way, um, is definitely something everybody wants to do. So, look forward to that.
Thank you. All right, and SEL.
Hi. So we had a really, um, wonderful meeting with Paulette and I and the other members of the board. Um, also got to watch some videos and stuff. Uh, the main emphasis of, uh, the meeting was the SEL days that took place in all of our schools. And I have to say, I was just so impressed with all of the activities that were happening at every single level, um, around. So there's like five core competencies that Character Strong has that we're working around with our SEL. It's self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, decision-making. And each school took a part of one of those sort of core competencies and did activities around them. Um, so like Bear Tavern, it was around cooperation, and they had buddy classes talking about how they could cooperate together. Um, Hopewell Elementary had an obstacle course, an SEL obstacle course that they did. Um, so like really creative ways of getting at these different SEL core competencies. Uh, Stony Book talked about honesty, um, and different character traits of respect and responsibility. Tollgate did some mindfulness and some read-alouds. Um, they also did some grounding techniques. Um, uh, Bear Tavern, of course, and, uh, the Timberland Middle School did the St. Baltrix activity to support, um, cancer research and, uh, youth. Um, they also, at the middle school, which is really important, talked about regulating emotions and what real-life respect looks like. Um, and then at the high school, they had a, um, health fair in the gym where lots of different organizations came, um, and so they could talk about that. Um, and I guess, um, the other sort of conversation we had too was that when we look at Character Strong and the different activities around that, that that's just one piece of what we're doing around SEL, and there are so many different things, our social skills groups, our counseling groups, um, our, our school meetings, Nurtured Heart, our Mental Health First Aid, which actually Dan DiStefano kinda did all of, all, all of the reports sort of thing. Um, and then at our future meeting, we discussed that, um, we're just gonna talk about, because many of us have been at the strategic planning meetings, and a lot of SEL is coming up. So we're gonna kind of come together and discuss what each of us individually is hearing at those, um, strategic planning meetings.
Did I miss anything? Awesome. Thank you. All right, moving on to policies.
Okay, so the policy committee has been busy. Uh, we met on March seventh, and Principal Riley, who most of you know as the principal of the Central High School, joined us as a guest to discuss the school's random drug testing program. Uh, we also reviewed five sets of policies and regulations related to the new state law that was passed governing use of sick leave among school employees, and the state's comprehensive equity plan, um, which are all up for first reading today. So you saw those in your agenda. Um, so I'm gonna start with a brief overview of our discussion with Principal Riley, and we'll pause there for any questions or discussion, and then we'll move into a discussion regarding the policies that are up for first reading and abolishment today.
Thank you.
Um, so a little bit of background on the random drug testing programs. So, reg... So Regulation 5538 was adopted by the Board of Education in May 2018. So we've had it in place for about eight years. And per the regulation, all students in Hopewell Valley Central High School who participate in any athletics, co-curricular activities, have been granted parking permits for on-campus parking, or who elect to participate with parental consent voluntarily, are eligible for random drug testing. The testing procedures are implemented by a third-party provider, meaning that we pay a vendor to facilitate the program. So based on external societal shifts and our own internal data about the effectiveness of this program, the policy committee decided to revisit this regulation to determine whether it's helpful in furthering our goals as a school district and keeping our students safe. So I'll say the first thing to note that came up in conversation is that since 2018, we've seen the legalization of marijuana in New Jersey and a corresponding change in attitudes towards marijuana. And as a result, the perceptions of and rules regulating marijuana use are more similar to alcohol now than they are to other controlled substances. And the random drug testing program has seen a corresponding increase in positive test results over the past several years, with almost every student who tests positive, with the exception of one, testing positive for marijuana or THC use only. Often, these students are testing positive at very low thresholds, likely indicating infrequent recreational use of the substance as opposed to a more severe substance use disorder. So what this means from an operational perspective is that the time and the resources that are being diverted from students who have more severe substance use disorders to those who are using marijuana infrequently or recreationally. Second, while the initial intention of this program was to identify students in need and connect them to supportive services, I think the district has found that they're more successfully identifying students with severe substance use disorders through self-referrals, through teachers, and through friends. And through yearly reviews of students who have tested positive, our Student Assistance Counselor has also found that the majority of the students who are identified through the program as having a significant need, excuse me, for substance use disorder services, or who tested positive more than once, so they were recidivated, were already known to the district. Last, I'll say that as the evidence base around random drug testing in schools has built over the past few decades, I think the research is telling us pretty clearly that these types of programs really have little or no impact as a deterrent to substance use. In fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics has opposed random drug testing of students since 2015, based on the lack of evidence behind it. So with the input from the district's Drug and Alcohol Committee and other stakeholders, the school district really has been shifting towards a more educational and supportive approach to preventing substance use among our students. So for example, the student, the, excuse me, the district has completed a full audit of our substance use curriculum and is addressing areas where there might be gaps. And additionally, we know from the research that positive school climates are a protective factor against substance use. And as we all saw from Mr. DiStefano's presentation, we've been putting a lot of time and resources into that. So taking all of this into consideration, the policy committee is intending to propose Regulation 5538 for abolishment in June or July before the start of the 2024 to 2025 school year. So I will invite my colleagues from policy to jump in if I missed anything.
I can just share my perspective as a former student who was actually a freshman in the year that the random drug testing program was first administered. This is an archaic policy. I very much agree with the policy committee's decision to move forward with recommending abolishing it. It's clearly ineffective at deterring students from engaging in drug use underage. And it's overall a punitive policy that is removing very important resources that we need for students that are genuinely struggling and are in need of our counseling services. And we're putting students who, like Ms. Wilson just mentioned, who are testing low thresholds and are showing signs of recreational infrequent use, and we're essentially mandating counseling services for those students and removing the opportunity and the time allotted for students who do genuinely need more services in that regard. So I'm very much in agreement of this position. When I ran, there were a lot of community members and students specifically who brought this up to me. And so I'm happy to see that this is the direction we're moving forward.
So admittedly, for my friends on the policy committee, this is an area where when I hear comments about studies and things like that, I'm not sure if I'll.
Mike.
Am I not talk, oops. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Good. So admittedly, this is an area where, when I hear talk about studies and things that have happened over the past years, it's not something I'm not, I'm well-versed on. In talking with some of the fellow board members, who I've had individual conversations with about this, I have found myself in a conundrum thinking about this policy for a lot of reasons. Mainly because I lived in a school district where this happened and saw some of the benefits of it, and also saw some of the negative things from it. So I would ask, prior to this going up for a vote, if we're able to share some of this data, when we talk about archaic and correlation causation and things of that nature, so that we're just in a position to be able to talk about it. Additionally, I would just say publicly that I think I wouldn't be doing my job as a board member for the community if I didn't say that when we are talking about drugs and we're talking about drugs in the community and randomized drug testing, one of the challenges that I personally face in this whole dilemma is none of us on this, in this table, in this room, watching or in the community, know what the potential repercussions are to some of the legalization that has happened. And there's a lot of evidence to suggest that that was a good thing. Not many of us know what's on the other side of this. So I would just argue, I guess, out loud to say, let's stay cognizant of that as we're talking about it and look forward to learning more about it.
Sounds great. All right. Okay. Can I have a motion in a second to bring policy and Regulation 1642.01, sick leave, policies and regulations through 212 and 4212, Policy 5750, and policy and Regulation 2260 for first reading?
Don't move.
We've been busy. All right. So as I mentioned, we have five sets of policies and regulations that are up for first read. And the first ones here are linked to the state's new sick leave law for school district employees, as well as the second set are linked to the state's comprehensive equity plan. So we'll start with the sick leave-related policies. So a little bit of context about this, and I know I shared some of this at the last meeting. A new law was signed into place in July 2023 and went into effect immediately that essentially amended previous laws addressing the requirements around sick leave among school district employees. So the law basically expands the allowable use of sick leave, including both the reasons for taking sick leave and who can take it. So for example, it can now be taken for care of family members and also includes reasons like a closure of a child's place of care or school due to a state of emergency, and taking family members to medical appointments. It does also allow for the board to require certification, reasonable documentation, and advance notice of sick leave requests where practical. So our school district has been implementing sick leave in alignment with the new law since the summer, with oversight from Ms. Smith, as well as guidance of our board attorney. However, our policies and regulations now also need to be updated to align with the new law. So that's essentially what we're discussing tonight. So we'll start with Policy and Regulation 1642.0, sick leave. So these are new policies and regulations. So the policy essentially defines the allowable uses of sick leave per the new law, whereas the regulation lays out the rules around the use and accumulation of sick leave. So focusing on the regulation, which you have in your agenda, you can see that there are several places where the Board of Education has options with regards to the language included in the regulation. So first, the regulation divides use of sick leave into foreseeable leave, which is in the case of like a scheduled surgery, for example, and unforeseeable leave, which is in the case of a sudden illness, you didn't know it was going to happen, basically. So in the case of foreseeable leave, under the new law, boards can require up to seven calendar days' advance notice prior to the date the leave is to begin, of the employee's intention to use the leave, as well as the expected duration of the leave. And the law also requires the employee to make a reasonable effort to schedule the use of sick leave in a manner that does not unduly disrupt school operations. So you can see highlighted, if you look at the regulation, you can see highlighted the places where we have some choices. So if you look at Section C2 first, which is on page three, the draft regulation provides three options for expectations around notification of foreseeable leave, so leave that you know is going to happen. So in Option 1, the board may require up to seven days' advance notice of foreseeable sick leave when practical, and the superintendent sets the number of days. In Option 2, it says the board does require up to seven days' advance notice when practical, with the superintendent also setting the number of days. And then Option 3 allows the board to set the number of days of advance notice required, provided it's seven days or less. So here, the policy committee is recommending Option 2, which is requiring up to seven days' advance notice when leave is foreseeable. So for Section C3, which is right below it, the board is provided with two options in the case of unforeseeable leave. So Option 1 makes it optional for an employee to give notice of the intention to take unforeseeable leave. And Option 2 requires an employee to give notice of the intention to take unforeseeable leave as soon as practical. And here, we're recommending Option 2, so we're requiring the employee to give notice as soon as possible. So in the regulation, Sections D through H are not required by the New Jersey law, but they are considered sort of best-practice recommendations. So the board, meaning the board has the option to include them, remove them, or adapt them. And we're recommending leaving them in the regulation, but with some minor adaptations. So if you scroll down to Section D, this relates specifically to sick leave charges. So under D1, the board can select the percentage of the day that an employee can be absent before they'll be charged a full sick leave day, a full day of sick leave, excuse me. And we're recommending here 50%, which is really in alignment with our neighboring school districts. D4 applies to pre-scheduled sick leave during emergency closures. So the draft policy, or the draft regulation states that an employee who's scheduled for sick leave on a day that the schools don't open will not be charged with a sick leave day. We changed the language a little bit here to make it clear that this is only true on days when there is an emergency closure and staff are not contracted to complete professional development activities on that day. And then Section E speaks to readmission after sick leave. So E1, page 6, specifies the number of consecutive workdays that an employee can be out on sick leave before they're required to submit a statement from their physician indicating their fitness to perform duties. And we're recommending three days here. This has been our school district's policy for, I think, over 20 years. So it's the requirement that staff are accustomed to. All right. So I guess I'll just stop there. Are there any questions about that regulation? All right. So for Policy and Regulation 3212 and 4212 attendance, these are revisions to policies and regulations that had already been in place. So these policies and regulations mirror each other. So Policy and Regulation 3212 applies to teaching staff, where 4212 applies to non-teaching staff. So these were all last revised in 2009. They outline staff attendance regulations and policies in alignment with the CUSAC requirements, which are the New Jersey Department of Education's Monitoring and Evaluation System for Public Schools. So for example, the district must maintain accurate staff attendance records for teaching staff, analyze attendance patterns, and address any issues identified through that analysis. So to Policies and Regulations 3212 and 4212, we just had a couple minor revisions here. So in 3212, we've changed staff to teaching staff throughout to make clear that they apply to teaching staff members in particular. And in 4212, we've changed staff to support staff throughout. So we're just making really clear that differentiation between who they apply to. Both policies also now reference back to the applicable statute and remove any language that's inconsistent with the new law passed this summer. I'll just note here, before we move on to the CEPE-related policies, that we are also recommending to abolish Policy and Regulation 4432, sick leave. At the next meeting, we're bringing up for first read today, because the revisions that we just proposed will actually replace them. Anybody have any questions about that one? All right. So now we're moving on to the policies and regulations linked to the state's comprehensive equity plan. Okay, so for the first one, we have 5750, equitable educational opportunity. These are revisions to a policy that has been in place. So this is a policy that's mandated per state code and the New Jersey Department of Education's comprehensive equity plan. And essentially, what the policy does is it requires the school district to ensure that all students are afforded an equitable educational opportunity through the allocation of resources and through curricula that promote respect and acceptance among students. It also lays out the expectation that staff members should conduct themselves in a way that's non-discriminatory. So this policy was last revised by the board in February 2017, and we had a couple minor revisions here. So references to the Amistad Commission curriculum and the Commission on Holocaust Education curriculum have been removed from the policy guide and are referenced in Policy Guide 2260, which we'll review momentarily. Other revisions remove the list of protected categories and replace that list with the expanded list as defined in the state code. The policy committee also updated language requiring teaching staff members to exemplify the principles of equality and democracy to include all staff members. So we sort of expanded that. And then we updated the justification language to align with our school district's mission statement around empowering students. And then the second one you see here is 2260, Policy and Regulation. It's equity in school and classroom practices. Again, this is a policy that we're revising here in compliance with the comprehensive equity plan. So per the policy, our school district is required to provide all students with equitable and bias-free access to our school facilities, courses, services, and programs, regardless of race, religion, gender identity, or membership in other protected categories as defined by the law. The provisions in the policy lay out how we'll do this through, for example, ensuring needed support services are available to all students, that students aren't excluded due to medical conditions, that our curriculum addresses the elimination of discrimination, and equal access to athletic programs and facilities. So Regulation 2260 lays out the procedures by which a caregiver or student can file a complaint should they believe that there has been a violation of the policy. The policy was last revised by the board also in June 2017, and the regulation was adopted in April 2009. So we made minor revisions to the policy and regulation. So in Policy 2260, similar to the last one, rather than listing each protected category, we reference back to the state code that defines the protected categories. We relocated information addressing access to adequate counseling services to Policy Guide 2411. And then there's been some minor language changes to align with the recent revisions in the state law, and the title has also been updated. And then last, in 2260, the regulation here, additional guidance has been added for a person filing a complaint. So for example, the guidance says that a complaint can be filed during any time of day and delivered via essentially any medium, so phone, by person, email. We also updated the language in our committee meeting that says students and parents can file complaints to include caregivers as well, and then the title's been updated. And that's it, guys. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please.
I was interested in 5750, where it talked about staff members to exemplify principles of equity and democracy. And you were saying that that's referencing the law? The, I forget the statute it was. But I wandered around, and I couldn't find any definition of equity and democracy. Is there some way that you could give me help in that, or do I need to go somewhere else?
That's a great question. I don't actually think it's defined in the law.
That's the sense I got, that it should be talked about in the law.
Yeah.
Usually when I read a law, I'll find definitions at the beginning. But I couldn't find them. I was just. No?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can go back and look, do some more digging.
Well, I'll look, I'll look some more.
It's a good question, though, Mike. It really is. Thank you for raising that. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Bob, Mr. Colavita, do I do a first and second for the abolishment? Okay, let's vote.
All those in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? I know. We didn't want a second between.
So can I get a motion and a second to abolish policy and regulation four, four, three, two, sick leave?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, very good. Okay, we need a first and a second.
Comment?
Oh, sure.
I had concerns when you took over for Adam, because Adam set an extremely high bar. No problem.
Here, here. She's, she smashed it. Well, she does geek out a little bit. It is her jam. Awesome. All right, need a first and a second to approve the March. Do we have April? Yeah. Oh, we're doing April, sorry. Into March and April calendar. Okay.
April eleventh at ten AM.
No, I'm available nine to ten or in the afternoon. With my coffee. Okay. I do.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So April eleventh, eight o'clock, SEL. The other easy one is personnel, which is, I think, six o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
What? I like David's law.
Now, remember, the board meeting's later, twenty-ninth, so kind of wide open.
I was just gonna ask, but.
You want me to ask around first before we set a date? We wanted to meet with the Y.
Yeah.
Try to get a date with him and then reach out to you guys? Okay, so we'll leave it kind of open. I'll reach out and get a date from him and then a date from you. I'll try to keep it to the Monday.
Yeah, we shouldn't have too much other presences unless Tom has other venues for us.
So I mean, I'll try to keep it around the fifteenth to the twenty-second, but I'll get back to you guys.
Okay, so April.
Okay, now community relations, you, you stack that with what? April eleventh at eleven AM, that works for the community relationship.
No.
Would, would they start?
Doesn't work.
April eleventh.
No. Afternoon's fine, but not in the morning.
April eleventh in the afternoon?
I could do any time, yeah.
Eleven? Five would be better than eleven.
What?
That's the proposal, Mike.
You're the chair, actually.
You're the chair, you're in charge.
You gotta tell us what you want.
Oh, we have some. Yeah, 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 I, I, I had the whole thing.
Five o'clock?
Five on the eleventh.
Not the middle of the day? Well, actually.
And then policy. Remember, you have time. You have more time this month. I could. They may want to speak to you more than us.
After three, before noon or after three?
Twelve, twelve.
No.
April twelfth at one. No, three?
Before twelve or after three?
That's gonna be fine.
Twenty-four.
Yeah, that's gonna be fine.
And just, so, okay, we got all those, just, just the background. We were asked by Pennington Borough, they're doing a local government week at Borough Hall, and they asked if we would man a table in Borough Hall on April tenth from like five to, it's open, but seven-ish. We obviously don't want to have five workers there, but if anybody wants to show up, Alex.
I'd, I'd like to show up if you wouldn't mind seeing me so that I can block my calendar.
Well, I mean, we'll put it on the board calendar, but.
Okay.
There's that, Dr. Tracy and I, we're gonna man it or go to it. Couple of you guys want to show up. They don't know how many they're gonna get, how many people show up, but.
Are they actually doing this in person?
No, it's at Borough Hall.
You and your mustache. The two of you. Because you were holding your mustache on.
You're over there.
Okay, oh, yeah. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, calendar's passed. All right, any new business items? All right, moving on to our final public comment before we wrap. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Public comment is now open.
It's exciting for me to be able to celebrate Women's History Month, because that didn't exist a long time ago. Photos with quotes of famous women hang in the, from the ceiling at the circulation desk at our Hopewell Library, and families were encouraged by the administration to watch a Newsweek video that honored certain women of diversity. May we remember that diversity of thought exists within racial and ethnic groups as much as between these groups. Not all Asians think alike, not all women think alike. Lieutenant Governor of Virginia Winsome Sears and Senator Stacey Abrams share the same skin color, but they have distinctly different views on many topics. In this district's Equity Goal Plan of Action, it states, "Annually review and revise curricula to ensure that a balanced, and, that it provides a balanced and bias-free presentation of content." As the district formulates its five-year strategic plan, many women like me hope that a balanced and biased-free curriculum will be the foundational principle pertaining to the education of our children. This is at the heart and the soul of a public education and of a democratic republic. Whether it be about climate change, immigration, hostages in Hamas, gender ideology, other complex topics, students need the freedom to disagree, state one's beliefs and values, and seek the pursuit of truth. This prevents an official orthodox ideology being forced on children. So to provide some balance, I have some quotes to read. "Women are not doing anything wrong by affirming their biology and advocating to protect their rights. To believe that women deserve privacy, safety, fairness, and equal opportunity is pro-women, and it is pro-truth, and it is truth worth fighting for." Riley Gaines, All-American swimmer. "I encourage people to find and use the power of their voices just as much when I do not agree with them as those voices when I do agree with them." Nikki Haley, Ambassador to the United Nations. "Let us recognize that we can no longer tolerate violent oppression of women in the name of religion and culture anymore than we would tolerate violent oppression espoused by any other bully." Ayaan Hirsi Ali, Somali-born American activist. And my favorite, my very favorite, "Races have never done anything. What seems to be race achievement is the work of individuals." Zora Neale Hurston, thank you.
Any other comments? Brian Kavanaugh, I live in Hopewell Township. Just as you guys are considering the budgets going forward and as these things start to crunch together, there's been a general trend that I've noticed that we focus on technical skills, the technical ability to do mathematics, the technical ability to write a good paper, the technical ability to understand history, and we always focus on the soft skills. In my experience in life, and I think many of ours, is that as we get into our adulthood, our technical skills maybe get us our first job, but our second, third, fourth jobs, all of those promotions are all based on our ability to have soft skills. And so I would encourage you to not lose sight of the soft skills as we also seek those technical skills to get our students into secondary education. I also just would like to say and bring up totally separately tonight, I used to be the president of Sharp PTO. It was a pleasure to do that for four years. The most unexpected part of pleasure for me was the number of phone calls I would get from around the country, knowing if the things they heard, the rumors about this place could be real, because they couldn't believe that you could actually get help and support for special ed students. So I want to congratulate the board and congratulate Ms. Donardo on all the work that you all do in support around our district. Please keep that in mind, that it is one of the reasons that people are looking to come here, because they are desperate as special education parents. They feel lost, they feel alone, they live in states with quotas. They live in states where kindergarteners have to be suspended for ninety days to get services, because otherwise the district won't take it seriously if the parent is just trying to be helpful and take their disruptive child out of, out of school. And so please consider that strongly, that we, we are very blessed here, but there are a number of people looking to come here because of the strength of these programs. Thank you so much.
I can't see if there's anybody behind the podium, but I think we've.
I want to second that, like, here, here, and like, we see you, and we see what you have done with this district, and you should be acknowledged.
Yeah, I got goosebumps. Thank you for that. Okay, well, with that.
I just thank you both for your comments, and I know that you're both involved in strategic planning, right? To make sure that these things get on our strategic plan for the next five years. So we appreciate your comments tonight, and thank you for the Women's History Month shout-out.
With that, I will close public comment number two, and I will ask a first and a second to move to executive. Oh, to discuss hip and personnel, not tenure, and student matters. First and second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?